Enter County Planning Commission, wait session. January the twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Called to order, meeting that order. Father God, we thank you for starting us off on a new year. We thank you for sparing us and allowing us to come again together. Pray that you just guide us and that we use. You have an example of what we ought to do there. God let the spirit lead us and that we do what pleases and righteous is. Not just to please us, but whatever the situation is that we're working according. Go with it with me. Thank you for each and every one that's sacrificing their time to come and help assist in the Edfield County. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Any reports? No reports, no reports. No reports, no guest speakers. No old business and we wait new business. We're gonna go review and hold a question and answer session on the following for the upcoming. Though we got the joint meeting coming up between with the county council and the.
Yep, and so likely, we took likely items that y'all are going to discuss with county council. Things that we thought y'all would want to discuss and things that we think county council might want to discuss. And we put those on there. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to answer any of y'all's questions before that meeting. So that you know what you want to ask and how you want to ask it, et cetera. And then go over some of the things that we'll be looking at in the future that you're you're gonna need to look at one way or the other. The first one, plan development ordinances. Obviously, the planning commission and county council have not been on the same page. Over several, several planned developments at this point. Tornado. But I wanted primarily, and this is also the case for county council. One of the things that needs to be made clear is the difference between a major subdivision and a planned development. There is this concept that major subdivisions have to go to the county council. They do not. A major subdivision comes here and is checked by this board against our existing ordinances which are already on the books. If they meet those regulations, they're good to go. If they don't meet those regulations, you fail them and you give them a notice. The reason we're not passing your subdivision is because you don't meet X, Y, Z zoning ordinance. You don't meet X, Y, Z setback, whatever the case is, whatever rule that they don't meet. That's why they failed and you have to provide that information to the proposed developer. A planned development, it does not matter what our rules are at all. Our current ordinances do not exist except for the PD ordinance. It is a negotiation between the developer and the planning commission to put together a plan that then has to go to county council and county council has to create a new ordinance specifically for that development. And the PD is governed by your comprehensive plan. So that's where your comp plan comes in is in the creation of new regulations. A PD is the creation of a new regulation. A major subdivision is not. Now, that is one of the, the, the key items that needs to be kept in mind by both planning commission and county council. One of the things that y'all will probably want to discuss with county council is what do you want to see in a planned development? We give you a recommendation, you change things. So what is it exactly is gonna get us on the same page in terms of planned developments? And do we, depending on what they say, do we need to change anything in our planned development regulations to get us there? So that, that will be the planned development conversation you have with county council. What do you want? And do our current regulations, are they sufficient to achieve that? If not, we need to work together to change these regulations to get them where they need to be. If you're happy with the regulations, then you need to take our recommendations when they meet those requirements. Obviously, county council does have the final say when it comes to creating a new ordinance like a PD. But five of you do directly represent a county council district. And then we have two at larges. So it is important that at least five of you are on the same page with your current representative. And then the two at larges need to be looking at the bird's eye view. It's understandable when there's conflict or changes in county council. When there is, you know, a three to two or three to, you know, whatever, when the vote is split. Then the agreement wasn't a hundred percent in the planning commission. So it's understandable for the county council to come in and act as the tiebreaker, as it were. But if all of you are unanimous, then it should be pretty much in line with what you think county council's gonna want to see and do, right? And I know that that has been a contentious point between y'all recently with the last one heritage. Some of that was due to citizen complaint. You know, the citizens came to the county council and they did not come to the planning commission. So that obviously makes a difference when county council's hearing one thing and planning commission is hearing an entirely different thing. That does make a difference. But it's good to just go ahead and talk to council about that while y'all have them there at the same table. And just hash out any confusion. Now, section B. Land use of the comp plan. As y'all know, June fourth, two thousand nineteen is when we adopted our new comp plan. It's required by law that we update this every five years. So we are about to have to do an update anyway. But there are some key items that I think the planning commission needs to discuss with council. Specifically highway overlays. You know, we have in our comp plan to have the Sweetwater overlay extended all the way to Edgefield. We have Martin Town Road overlay that should be in place. And then we have two smaller overlays that surround the towns of Edgefield and Johnston.
But now those are in our comp plan, they're not.
We do not have them in our ordinances, which is the problem. We, we either need to edit our comprehensive plan to reflect what we really want to see. Which means if we don't want these overlays, we need to remove them. If we do want these overlays, then we need to start passing regulations to put them in place. We need to come up with, you know, like Martin Town Road. It doesn't do any good to put a commercial overlay there, it's all RD. Everything we have except for one little corner is residential development. So a commercial overlay like we have on the end of Sweetwater does you absolutely no good on Martin Town Road. It needs a whole different type of overlay than what we currently have. We would need to build that from the ground up. And you'll need county council's support to do that. Now, the LMO had that overlay in. Some of it was unpopular, mostly I think just the size of it was unpopular. I think it was originally a thousand feet from either side of the center line, which is a rather significant overlay. I mean, that's pretty much out of sight from the highway before it ends. Most overlays in most places are, you know, a hundred feet, fifty feet, thirty feet. You know, it's stuff like what kind of fence materials you can use. Mailbox appearances, you know, it is streetscape stuff. Whereas the overlays that were in the LMO were big enough where it could affect the type of siding you put on your house. And, you know, what kind of barn doors you could have. It was much more extensive. So we, you need to discuss with county council, look. I personally, now this is Doc talking, not, not trying to put my opinion on any of you. I personally think Martin Town Road needs an overlay. It's a beautiful corridor. It needs some protection. Do I think it needs to be as extensive as what was in the LMO? Probably not quite that, at least not that broad. But would you want to see a seven foot tall chain link with razor wire on top of it? On Martin Town Road? I personally don't think that would, I think that would ruin Martin Town Road, that kind of look. But that's one thing you need to discuss with council and say, you know, do you like the way Martin Town Road looks? Do you think it's appropriate for us to put some kind of overlay in place to keep that, that style alive? And prevent anything from, from disturbing it. Sweetwater Road overlay from, it's currently stops right where the gas tanks are on Sweetwater Road. The overlay we have there, it really only applies to commercial and very little application even to commercial. It has some.
In our ordinance?
It is currently in our ordinances.
Just up to the tanks?
Just up to the tanks from, from twenty-five to the, right there where Cooper's land starts, basically.
Does it include Kenan Transportation that's right behind, right beyond the tanks? Cause that Kenan Transportation, that's a gas truck parking lot and office.
I will tell you in just a second. So no, it does not. It stops at the old rail bed. Now, this overlay, all of its architectural controls do not apply to anything until a commercial business gets to large scale retail, which is a twenty thousand square foot building. I don't ever see a twenty thousand square foot building getting built at that corner on that end of Sweetwater. So you might also want to ask county council if you want to beef those requirements up and put some sort of architectural controls on the commercial aspect. Going further down Sweetwater Road, it's gonna be a residential corridor. I, I, I don't really see. And I could be completely wrong, but I just don't see that becoming a major commercial thoroughfare. So applying commercial overlays there seems counterproductive. You might want to consider a residential overlay, you know, some fencing requirements or something of that nature. But a commercial overlay from Stevens Road to Edgefield?
One other thing we ought to look at from kind of from that rail bed all the way up to twenty-five. It's not necessarily an overlay, but maybe what we would call a beautification project. I mean, I think there's some things greenery, greenery wise that would really help that area. I think there's some cleanup things that would help. You know, when you come off of twenty-five and you basically are coming into that, people from residents of Mount Vantage or anything up and down Sweetwater Road. I just think from an entryway into the county, which is what it is, it's one of our, you know, major entryways into the county. I think long term, I think there's some things that could be done to beautify that. Not necessarily get into architectural restrictions or this, that and the other. I just think there's some things that could help further with screening. I think, you know, for the tank farms for what they do, I think it stays pretty clean. I mean, there's not a lot of stuff in the roads. I mean, they do keep grass cut and that kind of stuff, but I think, you know.
We do get the occasional call that they need to wash a tank. You would be surprised. People will complain about anything, don't give me that eyeball.
They will.
They will tell me, they will call me and say their tanks are too dirty, somebody needs to go wash it or paint it. We've had those calls in the past.
I, I get it, but I, but I think down that, that small stretch of what it is, I think it would be something to look at long term with maybe the companies that are there, maybe with council and just talk about what we can do beautification wise that could make that entryway more appealing. We're not gonna change the use of it, but we can certainly change in some aspects the screening and the overall look of what that happens.
Right, and, you know, that's one of the things you need to discuss. How, how does that go with our description here? The overlay would recommend setbacks from the road, wooden fences, including wood posts with wire. Preservation of pasture, stable farm, architectural styles. The zoning may allow for small commercial uses, including things like small grocery or butcher shop, which might sell local products and stables and equine activity centers. This type of non-residential zoning would be consistent with the estate residential land use. Again, we don't even, we don't even have this type of overlay there now. What is being described in the comp plan? That's probably tornado. So, you know, that's one of the things you'll discuss. Do we want an overlay that would meet this description? And if so, do we want to work on creating it? Or do we want to go into our comprehensive plan during the update and change this description to something more appropriate? Do we want to continue the overlay down Sweetwater or do we want to leave it where it's at? So those are the sorts of things that you're gonna need to talk to county council about. How y'all feel? And they might say, you know what? We think y'all been doing a great job on those sorts of things. We'd like you to just come up with a recommendation and send it to us. In which case that's fine, but I think this gives you an opportunity to just have some back and forth with them, you know, all at one time. Cause obviously, all of you can't be in the same room at the same time. All of them can't be in the room at the same time unless it's in a called meeting. So this just gives y'all an opportunity to pound it out while everybody is present. There are gonna be other things that need to be updated. And y'all, y'all, once we get into the update, a lot of the basic stuff like population numbers, land use percentages, all that data, I'll just go in and stick that stuff in and then y'all will just see that change. There won't be a whole lot for y'all to really discuss in terms of, you know, data points. Y'all might use them to beef up descriptions or say, you know what? That area has grown by twenty-six percent. Maybe we should consider changing the zoning there or something of that nature. And it might make you want to change a description of land use or something like that. But for the most part, most of the statistical stuff is gonna be uninteresting to either body. That's just stuff we have to put in. But I think.
I got a question, since we're on the Sweetwater Road quarter. Can, is there a way to include the Kenan property in that overlay? But not the other side of Sweetwater Road, Cooper Field?
So.
Like is there a way to extend, to include that parcel that Kenan has?
This one?
Uh huh.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
And, but not across Sweetwater Cooper Fields, not across the street. Can you do that legally?
So overlay basically works very much like a zoning district. It just doesn't have zoning applied to it. So it doesn't have land use regulations, it doesn't have setback requirements, it doesn't have lot size requirements. It has things like entryway requirements, like you gotta have a landscaped entrance to your facility. It has fencing requirements, it has sign requirements, like you can only have one sign or you have to have a monument type sign. You can't have a billboard. So it has basically beautification requirements.
Right, so if we did that for the, for everything up to that point, but Kenan's not included. I would just think that Kenan should be included.
Yes, you absolutely can. I mean, it is literally, it is literally parcel by parcel.
Would, if we did that, would they not, is grandfathering?
It would not affect.
Come to play with them?
So technically, for the most part, yes, we would consider them grandfathered for most things. But technically being a overlay, things like paint colors or, you know, types of mailboxes or, I mean, you could go back and enforce that as a code enforcement item after it passes. Generally speaking, if it were something outrageous, we would just send them a letter and say, hey, look, the regulations in your area are changing. Your fence or blah, blah, blah doesn't meet those requirements. Can we work out a time for you to correct that? And then we would just give them that time to fix it. And if they didn't want to, then that could become an issue later down the line. But generally speaking, now, now if it's something like you can't even have a fence and it's a secured business that has to have a security fence, no, we're not gonna go back and force them to tear down their fence because we changed the rules at the last minute. Now, that's, that's not gonna happen. But an overlay is not zoning. So the same grandfathering clauses could or could not apply depending on what you're doing.
But you're saying that if they have something in place, technically with an overlay, it's not grandfathered in? Like if they have a fence that doesn't meet the requirement?
Unless you specifically apply a grandfather clause to it, no, technically not.
But you could apply grandfather clause?
Absolutely you can.
I think you would have to.
For example, uh, let's say it's had, I don't know, a barbed wire fence requirement. You know, no barbed wire fences become, it becomes where you can't have just regular barbed wire fences. You gotta have a horse fence or something. You could technically go back and say, hey, you need to put a horse fence up in front of your barbed wire fence. Let's say we increase, we put a buffer yard requirement. Hey, you need to landscape your entrance. We have this buffer requirement for your entryway. You know, and you could work with them to get those trees planted or something like that. But yeah, you can also just go in there and say, you know, if it, it doesn't apply to you, you're grandfathered in until your operation ceases. And that is standard procedure. We usually do put grandfather clauses in everything so as not to upset the existing residents of any area.
That would affect the sale of somebody's home possibly. Say they've got horse fencing up and we don't allow for horse fencing and they sell their property. Well, the new owner's gotta tear down the horse fencing. That's a big cost.
It could be.
And it's rural land.
It could be. But again, you would have to be looking at what regulations you're putting in place. Obviously, you don't want to go down Sweetwater Road and say no horse fencing. That's the kind of fencing we would prefer over every other kind of fencing. You might want to say no seven foot tall barbed wire fences. But you see what I'm saying? I mean, the idea of the overlay is to keep it in conformity with its existing conditions more than it is to radically change the way the corridor looks.
That's the biggest point about the overlays is basically, I think, both here and when we meet as a group, is to understand at the forty thousand foot level, what are the elements? What are the things that mean the most to these corridors as far as looks? Overall aesthetics? I don't think anyone in the county is gonna want to disagree if we want it to look rural. It's a whole reason why we tossed out the LMO to begin with because of just things like this that were in it to begin with. But I still believe there are very sensible things that can be done that basically, the word I use is codify. Basically saying, we want it to stay rural, we want it to have pleasing fences, we want horse fences. We want you to, you know, keep this land like this. And so to keep, keep it that way.
Right, it's more about preservation.
Yeah, that's right.
And generally speaking, that's how overlays are used. It is used to preserve a look. Now, sometimes cities do have to back up and punt. You know, Evans, for example, sometimes they do have to change the look of an area by drastically changing the zoning and drastically changing the overlays. But for most counties, that is not the purpose of them. It's a, it's a preservation effort to try and keep it in the same style that it currently is. So that's, that's one thing you're definitely gonna want to talk to them about. What do you want to see with this? Do you want us to change the comp plan? If we're gonna put these overlays in place, what kind of things do you, do you want us to focus on that?
What is the acreage basis on the planned development right now? Is it's a minimum of five or ten acres? What was it that we came up with?
I think it's fifteen. It's fifteen.
So minimum parcel size is fifteen acres and it has to be at least three hundred by two hundred. It has to be, have direct access to one, at least, at least one state or county road. So obviously permitted uses would be set by county council at the time. Does not, under any circumstance, allow sexually oriented businesses or mobile or manufactured homes.
And Doc, if I'm not mistaken, these PD, the PD rule of law really starts at the state, right? I mean, the state, the state is what basically created these to allow for exactly what you talked about, negotiation of use for things.
So the idea behind PDs originally is, back then zoning was becoming the standard. And many jurisdictions went ahead and zoned their entire county or their entire city. And if you go, in most places in the United States, that's the case. Everything is zoned. There is no unzoned land in most places. And the issue there, of course, came up where sometimes an appropriate land use could be had, but the zoning would not allow some part of it. So you could not have a Hammond's Ferry because you might be able to build the commercial aspect of it, but you couldn't build the live work units or the apartments or the single family houses on the outskirts. You know, there would, there was some element that the existing zoning just wouldn't allow for. So the states came around and said, look, we'll allow towns to, a developer can come in and apply for planned unit development. And that allows them to negotiate with county council for that specific, specific property, that specific project. So that if it is appropriate and council and planning commission finds that use appropriate, they could then custom write those zoning ordinances for that particular property.
Does the PD have to also comply with the comprehensive plan?
The PD should always comply with the comprehensive plan.
So we can write in the comprehensive plan some minimums or some maximums that can, that are allowed within that PD?
If you want to do minimums and maximums for the PD, you need to put it in the ordinance, not the comp plan. The comp plan should have bird's eye view items only. So we want this area's density to be, you know, two units per acre. You're not gonna say we want half acre lot sizes. Now, the zoning takes care of lot sizes. The comprehensive plan is supposed to be the big picture, whereas the zoning is supposed to be the details. Zoning, once it's applied, it applies period. It's absolute, it's already approved, it is a law, breaking it is a misdemeanor. So if, you know, X, Y, Z development company comes in and says, I'm putting in quarter acre lots and we have a half acre lot size requirement, the answer is no. And if they go build it anyway, I'll go slap handcuffs on them and take them to jail. It's an actual crime to violate it. When it comes to like a subdivision, if a subdivision came in right now and it was out on Garrett Road and they said, we're gonna put in seventeen thousand houses. We got two and a half acre lots, we're putting seventeen thousand units, we have enough land to do it, we're putting in the roads. There's absolutely nothing y'all can say except yes, it's allowed. And that's, that's just how it is because there are no minimum lot sizes in an unzoned area. There are no use restrictions in an unzoned area. If you can apply conditions, so just like we have, if you don't have water and sewer, you gotta have two and a half acres. But what if they do put in water and sewer? What if they pay ten million dollars to bring water and sewer in? They could chop it into nine thousand square foot lots and build as many houses as they want to.
That's been exactly my point about zoning.
So zoning is a definite, but in a PD, it's the comp plan. So if they come in and say, I'd like to do this, this and this, y'all can just go, eh, nope, don't like it. You can look at the comp plan and go, comp plan does, says you can't do that, answer is no. Or you can say, you know what? That actually is appropriate there. I think we should recommend a change to the comp plan. So you can go either way. The whole point of the PD is to give you that negotiating authority. It is a what do you want to see, what do they want to see and can y'all meet in the middle? And if the answer is yes and you can meet in the middle, then you make that recommendation to council. And if it gets to council and let's say, let's say y'all thought it was entirely appropriate, even though the comp plan says that the density can't be that high. Let's say they just wanted one section of townhouses, but that would increase the overall density of the project above that which is recommended by the comp plan. When y'all make that recommendation to approve and it goes to council, I will tell council, look, this is a little outside of the scope of the comp plan. In their recommendation, we're gonna have to make this adjustment to the comp plan. County council can make the adjustment to the comp. County council can make the adjustment to the comp plan and improve the PD at the same time. So it's not really that big of a limiting factor, it's about your negotiation. You want to make sure that whatever's being put there is appropriate for there. The comp plan is usually the guide for that. Because you've already sat down, you've already looked at the maps, you've already looked at the existing land uses, you've already looked at the population, and you've already determined that this land use is most appropriate in this area. This, you're all Edgefield County citizens, you're all familiar with Edgefield County. The whole idea of you is to know what's appropriate where in those terms. So your comp plan is usually the guide you want to use because you've already done the legwork of determining what's appropriate where. That does not mean that there can't be a situation that comes up where you go, I didn't think of that, but you know what? You're right, that would be appropriate there, we need to make a change.
So, um.
You know, I was kinda kidding when I said we might be sheltering in place, but we might be. We might actually be sheltering in place.
Anybody see anything what's going on?
I can go look out the window.
Let me see you outside.
Yeah, go ahead, at least you go outside and check it out.
Tornado warning.
Yeah, we're in warning.
Till six fifteen.
That's what it says.
They just extended it from five forty-five to six fifteen. I've been watching the radar, it's not pretty.
Does it say specific area?
It's getting started, it's starting to rain, it's coming from, it's basically, it looks like it's almost coming, uh, up twenty-three like from.
Low dock.
Directions traveling.
That's where it was, yeah.
Yeah, Hamilton, my husband said Hamilton Branch, so that's low dock area.
But anyway, that's really all I have to say about that. Those were the two primary items that I thought y'all needed to talk with council the most about.
There's tornado touchdown in Thompson.
So the rest of this is basically y'all's opportunity to just ask me whatever questions you want and I'll answer them. And then once y'all have asked your questions, then we can adjourn.
I have a question.
Okay.
It's still complicated to me, understanding where our power and authority is as far as difference between comprehensive plan zoning PDs. But in listening to the citizens, you know, over the last few years, the big concerns are, um, small lot, single family small lot, residential neighborhoods that don't fit in with the surrounding area and with the rural feel. And then the other one was these developments that are allowing, um, we're allowing townhouses in with the single family residential, concerns about, are they gonna turn into rental units and bring the value down? So is there a way that we can control, uh, minimum lot size?
Zoning.
And can we have them write, is, can we write in their covenants or, or even a permanent deed restriction where, like the townhomes, um, only twenty percent could be rental units? So that you don't have these town, the townhomes in these developments turned into a hundred percent rental properties and mixed in with these single family homes? So to me, that's, I feel like over the last several years, that's the concern I'm hearing from the citizens the most. Cause I know in some.
So, I would say that probably the best way to, to handle that, i- if it's a development that includes townhomes such as, you know, Heritage where it's a PD, um, that, that would need to be a condition that's listed during the creation of the PD ordinance.
Right.
So that would be a condition that, uh, county council would set on them. And once that's done, unless they come back to council to have that PD zoning ordinance changed, it would be in effect. So, the rental thing is a little bit more complicated because you can specify, like you can't have apartment complexes, that's a condition that we applied on Heritage Place, you can't have apartment complexes. But there's a lot of talk in a lot of places about, you know, like, people renting out their house for the weekend, Airbnb type rental. Historically speaking, especially rural governments, just don't get involved in that. Um, if you go to Myrtle Beach, Charleston, et cetera, they have a whole set of rules for Airbnb and overnight rentals and vacation rentals and things of that nature. So yes, you can regulate those sorts of things. But I would say that it would need to be applied case by case with PDs. Now, as for small lot subdivisions, townhouses, all of that is zoning. If you wanna control that, you put zoning in place. I mean, and I know that using the Z word in public can get you burned at the stake. Trust me, I have spent years being yelled at about using the Z word. But zoning is the law that was created by state government specifically for the purpose of controlling lot size and setback and use. That was the entire reason zoning was invented. And the whole idea that zoning brings development to an unzoned area is ridiculous. You, you're not, you're not encouraging development by putting restrictions on a property for the first time. If anything, you're decouraging development by putting restrictions on the property. There's a lot of misunderstanding when it comes to zoning, people have a fear that government zones an area, they're going to take too much control and they're gonna be overbearing.
Well, I think we saw that with the LMO that was presented, so.
Right, but guess what? The LMO zoning wise would have been a thousand times better than what we have now in terms of controlling subdivisions. I mean, over half the county would require five acre lot size minimums for all major subdivisions. Seventy percent almost of the county would have been a five acre minimum lot size requirement for all major subdivisions. Entire rural agricultural district. And even in the areas where it was allowed, only really Highway twenty-five was allowed of any real density. And remember, we can't just eliminate density, you have to allow every use somewhere. You can't just say there's no townhomes allowed anywhere in Edgefield County, that's illegal on the state level. You have to allow them somewhere. So where do you feel that's appropriate? Personally, Highway twenty-five is, uh, that's the most appropriate place for that sort of thing.
Agreed.
Uh, we have sewer, we have water, we have high speed internet, we have all of, it's, you know, it's a four lane highway. Literally everything about it is designed to handle more traffic. Where you don't want it, in the middle of Sweetwater Road. You don't want ten thousand townhouses in the middle of Sweetwater or in the middle of Martin Town Road. That is not the appropriate place for it. You do, you, you do not have any kinda infrastructure to handle it. Now granted, those areas are unzoned, the infrastructure is not in place, and it is very unlikely the developer is gonna be eyeballing the middle of Martin Town Road going, you know what'd work there? Ten thousand townhomes. But, you know, still, if you wanna guarantee it, you zone it. The zoning regulations is the foolproof way to say, you will not have a lot less than one acre.
And you can do that if someone brings a PD, you can still say that to them.
Yes, yeah, you can say anything you want to at that point because you're creating the zoning ordinance at that point. You're saying, you're saying, here's your idea, but these are the changes we wanna see. And then you negotiate those changes, and if they agree to it, we write the law to put that in stone. And that becomes the rule until county council changes the zoning.
I think the biggest misconception that I heard, gosh, over the past couple of years here is zoning is a developer's friend. And I'm like, no, that's backwards, you know, and it, it, it's a mindset of, you know, we're trying to assist as a developer by protecting the land.
I think the primary thing there is, so developers do like zoning.
It lets them know where they can and.
Because it tells them exactly where they can and cannot go to do what it is they can, they want to do.
Right.
But zoning is not an incentive to developers. Putting regulations on property does not incentivize development. But developers do like to know what the rules are when they're trying to come into your county, you know, if.
That's why they don't tie up a bunch of time looking at a piece of property.
Also, if, let's say you're a developer that builds red light districts.
Yeah.
Well, obviously, if you can look on a map and go, this area here is the only place in the entire county that that's allowed, they're not gonna look anywhere else.
They'll be right on the doorstep.
So, you know, it, it saves them an enormous amount of time at that point. So it's not so much, you know, developers like or dislike, I, I, developers are neutral on zoning as far as use regulations go. What they like about it is just that they can go online and find the facts themselves without having to, you know, study a bunch of different properties and go into the planning office ten times, looking at a piece of property, trying to figure out what they can and cannot do on the property. So that's, that's the part that they would like about it. The regulatory part of it is not an incentive, it is a decentive, if anything. Any more questions?
How does, I mean, I think from the state perspective that plan development were also supposed to have some sort of commercial use linked to it correctly?
So, historically speaking, yes. It doesn't state in their law, hard statement that you absolutely have to have commercial use in it, so you can write a PD ordinance that just says mixed use, which mixed use typically does mean commercial and residential. But you don't have to necessarily apply it that way. Generally speaking, yes, that's, that's what you're looking at as a PD. You're looking at mixing a bunch of different elements that would not normally fit together in a typical zoning district. So you would see low density housing, high density housing, commercial, um, neighborhood commercial. Sometimes you'll see PDs with business elements where they have heavy business, light business. You know, Hammond's Ferry is a, in North August is a great example of what a PD can be. I mean, you can literally design a small town basically with all the different elements in it on a single parcel with a PD type zoning. Ninety percent of the time, you will see mixed uses inside of a PD. That being said, is not necessarily against the law for them to remove it.
I think it's important to note that PDs outside of our area, typically in larger towns, sometimes larger parcels that are more strategically placed sometimes in cities and towns. And even really, they really started being used more, um, kind of Virginia and up. You know, that, that's where they started because people would have these parcels and they could, they would zone for something that they needed a, they needed a use such as a commercial, or they needed a use that was multifamily, or they needed a use to be able to be used on the parcel, but they couldn't. And so the PD is what was created. I think if you look at how they are using those kinda scenarios, and then look at how, in some aspects, how it's being utilized here, they're kinda being used in different ways. They, they were used as a real, real tool in places where land was tight, different uses. They may have wanted some commercial or some small retail or something like that, or it gave them some real options, but the flip side of being in a rural county where we are and looking at how the PD itself has kind of evolved over the past three, four years, it seems like it's been used more as just a, another subdivision tool rather than it being used as what a real PD should be focused in on.
I think primarily, it's been used recently, um, to get things like townhouses in areas where historically they, they would not be. Um, so they, a, a lot of, a lot of residential developers like to mix townhouses, small lots, medium lots, and large lots. That, that's very popular way to design. Um, and very few zoning districts would allow that mixture. Um, so PDs often get used as a way to achieve that, um.
And in the areas outside of our area, where they needed that mix, it worked well. It's hitting a little bit of a logjam in Edgefield County because of that same type of approach being used and what happens in Edgefield County.
And I will say that there is case law, um, such, such as the city of Charleston, they got sued by their population because in an area they allowed a developer to come in and apply for a PD, he was building nothing but single family homes. And the only thing that changed from the zoning that was on the parcel and the zoning in the PD was smaller lots. So they literally used it to get around their own zoning ordinance in terms of lot size. Those, and, and the people did win that case. So, there are some cases that have been done in the past where the government has ruled that PDs inappropriately. So I think the most important thing when you're looking at PDs from the legality aspect is making sure that the uses that are being applied for would not normally be allowed by the existing zoning district, the uses. If they're trying to, if they're trying to apply for a PD to get around lot sizes, that's a no, you don't need a PD for that. You need to apply for a variance or you need to apply for a zoning change. You do not need to apply for a PD. You're just trying to get a PD so you can stack more houses together, that's not the purpose. It needs to be some kind of mixed use in there that would not normally be achievable.
It only comes into play, what you're talking about, on land that is zoned, not land that is unzoned.
Correct, unzoned land, they automatically meet all the regulations. They wouldn't need to apply for a PD, they just apply for a major subdivision, there is no minimum lot size.
This, you know, tug of war only really happens when there's zoning already in place on the property.
Correct.
And unzoned peace, I mean, that's one of my misgivings about not zoning things is because I've gone through and looked at the different things of what can happen on unzoned properties that people, you know, it seems like they don't want the zoning because they think it's restrictions. And I understand, I, I do understand that, that approach. But I don't wanna get on the flip side of that and have, you know, a developer maybe walk in and say, well, we wanna put fifty acres of self-storage units in. And there's nothing we can do, it's unzoned property, it could, it could happen at any point, maybe up Martin Town Road or just wherever it's unzoned property. Someone sells a parcel and there's thirty acres of, you know, self-storage units going somewhere. Or someone's building, I'd say, someone can build apartment units but have enough land that they can build basically a sewage system, sewage treatment system that can take that amount of development sometimes. And so, I'm just, the things that we don't want to see that I think people, it's harder to communicate if we are on the side of keeping Edgefield County in, at the state of which it is, but there's some tools that we need to be able to keep moving in that direction.
I do not disagree.
I agree, I, I think, but the, the LMO that came out that people read, all they saw was, I'm free to do these things on my land now, and if you zone me, you're taking those freedoms away from me. If you adopt this LMO or if you put me in this zone. I think if they saw zoning as, this is to preserve the rural area, this is to preserve your farmland, this is to preserve the way you're using your land residentially, you're gonna keep all your current freedoms and we're gonna restrict.
That last LMO got way out in front of us before we could ever get a handle.
But I think one of the important things to remember about zoning is you don't need to sit there and look at it from the standpoint of what can I do? Look at it from the standpoint of what, what I want my neighbor to do. You may be a family farm that's been there for four generations, and your neighbor may currently also be a family. and your neighbor may currently also be a family farm that's been there for four generations. But grandson don't give a dang about farming, and soon as he inherits, it's sold to a developer from New York who wants one-tenth acre lots as fast as he can shove them in there. Do you want that to be allowed next to you? That's the kind of stuff that citizenry needs to give their input on. Don't look at, I mean, zoning doesn't, is not retroactive. The, whatever you have on your property now, you're going to be able to continue to do that until you die, or you cease that operation, or whatever the case may be. When you're talking to citizens, they need to be telling you what they would want their neighbors to be able to do. Would I want a Walmart to be able to be built next to my house personally? No, I would not. I also wouldn't want an industrial plant to be built next to my house. I also wouldn't particularly care for apartment complexes to be built next to my house. So, I would consider my area to be perfect for s- single-family residential structures detached. If that's what you want to see, do I think, you know, a corner store or a bait and tackle shop would be out of place? Yeah, that's fine. But that's the kind of things that you need to engage on and get their input on. And I think in the LMO, we successfully did that on some levels during the development stage of the LMO. But then on the actual applying stage, it got really fast. So, you also have to understand that there's a natural fear to zoning.
Yeah.
It is a, it is a regulation on people's private property. It is. That's what it is. There's no other way to say it. There's nothing else about it. You can mean it as a preservation, you can mean it as a way to keep an area the same, but you are restricting people's property rights when you apply it. That is just the simple truth. So, you have to approach it from that, that natural fear reaction of, "Oh, you're, you're taking away some of my property rights." So, you need to make sure that they understand it's like, this is not necessarily about you and your piece of land. How would you like to see this area developed over time? It's not affecting anything that's currently here. Do you think this XYZ use is acceptable here? If the answer is no, we need to zone it.
Well, I think in the process we had, we, the public trust was lost because we did have those uh, meetings in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, you know, all around the county, and.
Was that every one of them?
Right. And, you know, I, I felt like Mr. Ford put in what he heard the citizens say. And then there were members of Planning Commission and County Council that wanted to change it. And then it was changed again even on third reading. And so, that lost the public's trust in the zoning and in the LMO. Because they felt like we, we were listened to by the paid consultant, but our elected officials and our appointed officials went, you know, did what they wanted to do despite what we were saying. And then they read the LMO, and it reads more like a HOA covenant than it does, you know, just a zoning thing, like this is residential, this is commercial. So, I think it's going to take time for us to regain the public trust again on any, any type of zoning on, on the county.
I'd not, I, I'm, I'm not, uh, going to argue that because you're, I, I don't think even if, uh, County Council right now, uh, becomes the best loved County Council that has ever been elected in the history of the world, if they say the Z word, there will be pitchforks and torches brought out, no matter what you say or do. There are going to be a couple of hundred out of the thirty thousand citizens that are going to want to burn you at the stake for it. It is just the way zoning works.
Well, and that, and partially because the trust was lost, but, you know, they tried countywide zoning back in the early nineties. And again, that one read like HOA covenants, you know, more so than just, we're going to designate these areas as commercial, industrial, residential, and.
Right, but remember, the zoning laws require you to specify by the NAICS code what is or is not allowed.
Well, it went beyond that. It went to how high you can, you, your grass is allowed. Countywide. It was, that's what it did countywide, and it, it was defeated. So, I think when, when government tries to reach too far, that's when you get that hard pushback from the public.
Maybe we need a simplified zoning. That would work.
It's about as simple as you can get right now, I think.
Yeah, nonexistent.
Yeah, I mean. I, I just think the over, the overreach caused the failure.
Or seventy percent of the county.
Or a reeducation for the public. I'm not reeducation, but.
The, the thing is.
She not saying a word.
You're going to have to get your core group to get, if you want zoning to work, and this is going to be true now, as it is ten years from now, no matter who's on County Council, if you want to put zoning in place and you want it to be effective and you want it to work, you need to get a core team together. You need to set what needs to happen. You need to go ahead and set the plan. You get your comp plan right, you design your zoning to meet it, you put it in place. And I don't care if you've got three hundred people lined out, out the door and up all the way to the courthouse, you put it in place. You deal with the cussing, you deal with the, the agitation, you deal with the nastiness, and you put it in place. And then you go back over the next five years, the next ten years, and you make small changes and adjustments. And you say, somebody comes in and says, "Hey, you know what? I really want to do this with my land, but your zoning won't let me." And you look at it case by case, and you adapt the zoning to your air, area, and it should always constantly be being updated and evolved. But if you don't ever get it in place in the, if you don't ever get there, you're never going to get there. If, if a handful of complainers is going to stop you, it will always stop you.
Amen.
It will always stop you. There's always going to be people who do not want to be regulated.
You gotta rip that manade off at some point.
Right. Aiken County is a hundred percent zoned.
We've been beating this dead horse for the three years I've been a planning manager.
You know, they had a couple hundred citizens that were against zoning when Aiken County was zoned. Aiken County doesn't have these big zoning issues that they did. It's zoned now. Am I always in agreement with what government does? Absolutely not, and nobody ever is. That's the point. No matter what you do, there will be naysayers. So, as the citizen volunteers on this board, you have to do what you think is best and appropriate. And if there is a document in front of me, uh, in front of you that you think is inappropriate, you need to change, you need to change it, or you need to vote against it, period. And then County Council has to do the same thing. And no matter which way you go, somebody's going to be mad about it, whether you're for it or against it. There are going to be somebody that's mad at you about it, period.
I think one of the largest things I remember coming up that made such an impact, and still actually today is making a huge impact on the county, just from reuse and rehab, is the county's inhabiting zoning back in the, was it mid eighties, I guess? And, um, video poker came in. And on the edges of the county, both, you know, where you've got, you know, on Martin Town Road, certainly, or along Highway twenty-five, and even actually up there on the McCormick line, if you're going up twenty-eight. You know, they, they built these buildings, I mean, you drive by and you think they were an anthill, they came up so fast overnight. And they created these things that just, to, even to this day, in twenty twenty-three, that, you know, the gas plus, or, you know, or the sprint stations down, you know, off of, um, coming in off of Martin Town Road. You know, the office that kind of sits up, even the small business office that kind of sits down. Where it was, uh, Doughboy's Pizza and all these, I mean, although, all of it.
Those were nothing but video poker parlors.
All it was is video poker, and they couldn't do anything about it.
The old Fox Creek High School sits up on the hill. All the way to highway, all the way to I twenty was nothing but video poker parlors.
All it was.
Some of those buildings have fourteen electric meters on them.
Oh, my God.
So, you had to have, so you had to have a meter for each one.
Because you had to, you could only have like five video poker machines on each meter, so.
My point then is that, that's, those are parcels that had no zoning on it. It happened, you know, overnight, there was something hot that was going on that, you know, it took over the property. And I think over the past thirty years, it's just kind of been melded into our roads and our entryways and kind of dealt with, but was it ideal to do? No. But you're still, generationally, you're dealing with these things. So, something as simple as, you know, missing the opportunities of putting in smart zoning places means you will deal with this generationally in how the land basically moves forward.
And also, y'all probably get more public involvement than most places. I don't want to say our citizens are spoiled because that's the wrong use of the word, but in most counties throughout South Carolina, if a major subdivision applied, it would be administratively looked at and approved or denied in the planning office, and there would be no Planning Commission input on it, period. It either meets the regulations, or it doesn't meet the regulations, and it gets stamped appropriately and sent back out the door. Um, so, there would be no chance for anybody to come in and say, "You know what? We don't like that." There would be no input from the public on a major subdivision at all. Because in most places, that's done by regulation, and it's administratively handled, and there is no chance for a public hearing in the first place. Um, so, our citizens actually do get the chance to come before you as Planning Commissioners and say, "This is not appropriate for the area. Y'all really need to look at changing these regulations." Now, when it comes to a major subdivision or a land development application for a commercial business, say hair salon, doesn't matter what it is, there might not be anything you can do to prevent that instance. So, let's say that hair salon comes in and it's general commercial and hair salons are allowed, and we get fifty people come in here and say, "This is a horrible thing. It should not be here. Y'all shouldn't allow this sort of thing." You might not have any choice but to approve it that day for that hair salon. But you can take that feedback and go, "You know what? They're absolutely right. This is not an appropriate use in this area." And then you can go back and make a recommendation to change that use from permitted to not permitted in that zoning district. Or you can choose to recommend that that area be completely rezoned to something else entirely. So, you do get that feedback, even though it's always going to be negative feedback because people who are for something are never going to show up to a meeting to be for it. That's, that's just the nature of government. The people that show up are going to be the people that don't want it, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. So, but you can take that feedback and use it to shape changes to the comp plan, or shape changes to your zoning ordinances, or shape changes to your lot size requirement, buffer requirements, screening requirements, sign requirement, whatever the case is, you can use that feedback as a, as a sort of guide. I think the last time we did the comp plan, we went a lot further than Edgefield County has ever done in the past. We had roulette, we brought people in with maps and crayons, and sat down and talked to people, and what do you want here, what do you want there? You know, what do you think about these overlays? I mean, Robert and Company really did a comprehensive job on the comp plan part. They, yes, I know there's a lot of contention on how County Council handled it and how they changed things, et cetera, et cetera. Not arguing that point. But before Robert and Company came in as our consultants and did that comp plan, previously, it was the planner sitting in the, it was me sitting in the planning office, my predecessor, not me myself, obviously. But my predecessor's sitting in there going, "We need to change this, 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 this. Write it up. Send it to the Planning Commission. Y'all need to okay this. Rubber stamp, rubber stamp. Go to County Council." That's, that's what the comp plans were previously. Um, Rick Green wrote a lot of our old comp plans just by updating the existing comp plan. They didn't really, he didn't really change anything. He just went in and said, you know, "Let me update the data. Have y'all changed any zoning? Nope. Okay, we're leaving land used to saying, here's your new comp plan." That was the update. It was, it was a data update. Um, now, he did that for free for us, which was a great benefit to us. Don't get me wrong. It got us through many, 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 many years. Very appreciative to him for that, and Rick Green is an incredibly good planner. I have nothing but respect for the man. But what Robert and Company did with the charrettes and all the time with the public, that was a level of involvement that Edgefield County is not used to. So, I, I personally think we come out better that way. Is it a headache for Planning Commissioners? Is it a headache for planning staff? Is it a headache for County Council? Absolutely. But we collected more data that one time than we probably have ever since the passing of the Comprehensive Planning Laws. So, I personally am in favor of continuing that on the ten-year cycle. Let's get the public involved, even if it's sixty people. Doesn't matter. That six, those sixty voices is still better than zero. But you're going to have negativity. It's just part of the, it's just part of it. You have to, you have to be ready to accept that.
So, what are we saying here? Are we headed towards trying to go back down the LMO path? Is that what you're saying?
No, absolutely not. I'm saying that you and County Council at this combined meeting need to get on the same page with the comp plan. What you want changed, you need to know what they want you to change in the comp plan. And you need to make whatever recommendations to them that you feel is necessary. Like, if, if you feel strongly that Martin Town Road absolutely needs to have a highway overlay, you need to say that to them.
But if you're not going to push the zoning in place to back the comp plan, we've already been told.
That's what you need to tell them. So, the comp plan has teeth with the creation of ordinances. So, PUDs, for instance, comp plan's great. But if you're trying to use a comp plan to stop a commercial business or a subdivision, it's not going to work. Judge's going to throw it out. We've already seen it happen in Edgefield. It just doesn't, it's not a legal document. You can't, you can't charge somebody with a crime for not committing a crime. Whereas if, if you break a zoning ordinance, you've literally com, you've committed a crime. You have broken the law. I can come and stop you physically from doing that. But you violated the comp plan, now you can pretty much ignore it. What am I going to do? Arrest you for not breaking the law?
Well, that's my point. We've been, that's what I keep saying. We've kicked this dead horse a long time. We, you're right. We got to, we got to get with County Council. And the last time they gave us direction to follow the comp plan and write an LMO, we see where that ended. So, now we've got to be a little smarter than we were last time and make sure that wherever we're going, we understand there's going to be pushback. It's going to be pissed off people, but as leaders, you just got to deal with pissed off people sometimes. You know, you just, you're not going to make everybody happy. And that's a sign of a good leader is being able to make that hard decision because you know it's right. So, that's my thing. I don't want to just run around in circles for another few years. We're going to do it. Let's get on board as Planning Commission. Let's talk with County Council, and then let's, let's go.
And that's, that's the whole point of the discussion tonight is to give y'all fuel and ammunition. Things that y'all need to think about are what do you want to be on the same page with County Council? This is your chance to say, "These are the items that we need to work on, and I want to be on the same page with y'all." So, what is it that you want to see?
Well, I've, I've always felt like there was a benefit in zoning. I, but my problems with some of the zoning were, some of the specifics within zoning, and some of the lines where the map was on the zoning, uh, proposals. Because like, for my neighborhood, the zoning line went down my street, and my neighbor was going to be under a different zone than I was going to be under. So, it was to me illogical. And then some of the, like I said, some of the restrictions read like, more like an HOA covenant restrictions than something countywide.
The overlays, yes.
Right. I am, I'm for designating areas that this is going to be residential development, it's going to be retail development, this is commercial, this is industrial. But, um, you know, I feel like an individual landowner, and that's their primary residence, should have the least amount of restrictions on their land, you know, with, within reason. Like, we don't want a pig farm, but within reason. But I feel like really, the most restrictions need to fall on the developers so they don't bring in something, a development that doesn't fit in with the county and the rural area of the county.
But see, this is, this is the confi, and I've heard that a lot. Here's the thing. You are a developer. You built your one house. You have developed that land. Legally, you are a developer. A person buys a piece of land, all they are is a landowner, period. Doesn't matter whether they built fifty thousand houses or one house, they're a landowner. Doesn't matter whether they built fifty thousand houses or one house, they're a landowner. They have the exact same rights as every other landowner. When you pass a law, that law has to apply equally to every single person in the county. So, you go into an area, yes, you can set a law that says you can't have less than one acre lot sizes. But you can't say developers have a rule that says that developers can have one acre lot sizes, and non-developers can have half acre lot sizes. Cannot make that distinction. Now, you are applying a rule to one that you are not applying to another, and you are dis, guilty of discrimination, and that is illegal. But you can go in and say, this is a rural residential area, one acre is the minimum we will ever allow to be built, lot-size wise, and soon as you pass that, every time they bring a plat to April, April says, eh, that's point eight of an acre. Sorry, it does not meet the requirements, you cannot cut it out. And it's done, and it applies to everybody, doesn't matter whether you're a developer, doesn't matter whether you're a farmer, doesn't matter whether you're, yeah, trying to cut an acre out for your kid. If it's less than an acre, you're not doing it, period.
So, in a, a rural residential area, can a developer bring in a PD?
Absolutely.
And, and then they can have
But you can deny a PD just outright.
You can deny the PD.
You can, they will come to the Planning Commission, and if you don't like their plan, you can say
It's like, or our zoning.
That's correct, you do not, you do not even have to entertain them.
I think that was a misunderstanding, that a PD could override all of that, I think that's what was
So, a PD can override it, if you allow it. You, as the Planning Commission, have to make a recommendation on a PD, that recommendation can be, quite frankly, go to hell. But, you don't have to do that. If you think it's appropriate, you can work with them and rec, make whatever recommendation you want. Now, County Council, they're gonna have the ultimate say, cause it is the creation of an ordinance, so
So, Planning Commission and County Council could allow that PD to go in there, that doesn't really fit this
Absolutely.
Well, so
Council, it's council without us.
So, remember, County Council is your local elected legislators. If it comes to a local law, they can write or change anything at any time with three readings. Doesn't matter what the rule is. They can create any law or change any law with three readings. A zoning ordinance, like a PD, is just a local law, it is just an ordinance. Zoning is an ordinance. There's no difference between a, a land development regulation ordinance, like fencing requirements, and a zoning ordinance. They're exactly the same in terms of law.
Doc, it's getting a little late, I think, you know, I, I would just like to make a little bit of a recommendation, I guess, for after our reading for the Planning Commission. Number one, if you look at where we started with zoning, before we even started the, um, land, the LMO or any of that, we really look at what we did and what changes were actually done zoning-wise. You had, you know, the, the gen, the general development went from a gen, broke it up into two categories. You had a GR and a GC, I think, were
Right.
And, really, the hotspots were down in my district, you know, is going up Martin Town Road and out Briggs Road, down Budlawn and some of that. Well, we presented that to Council, and off the recommendation of about ten people, you know, they decided not to zone all that, they actually throwed it back and came back towards the Aiken County line, coming this way. So, at the end of the day, I mean, we're, we're not any more than about a year out from when all this kinda went down. So, my point being is that I don't think Council has any flavor for doing any more zoning, I really don't.
Not right now, I agree.
I think we're spinning our wheels talking about zoning with them. Because I think we gave them a very sensible plan, and from that, they really kinda threw it to the wind in some aspects, especially down in my district that I was trying to protect. And they decided, nah, we don't, you know, we don't really wanna do that, just back it all off. And so, all the meetings and everything we went through really didn't mean a whole lot. So, my point being is that, number one, I think the zoning aspect of doing any more zoning at this point, and really from the public's eye, I don't know how far it's gonna go. Number two, is I think that the overlay districts are important. I think, at the end of the day, from a zoning standpoint, or from a just a pure aesthetic standpoint, that to me is probably more important than even the zoning side of things. Because you set the tone on your thoroughfares about what your county looks like. So, like I said at the beginning, I think figuring out what are the elements, what are the things that we like and things we don't like seeing somewhere. I don't like seeing an old beaten-down cars right up next to the road, it's been there, rusting away. You know, I don't like seeing old equipment sitting there on the roadside, just rusting away. I don't, I, there's just, there are certain types of fencing that I don't really care for, but I think that's a conglomerate of, you've got Highway twenty-five, Martin Town Road, you've got Sweetwater Road, a couple other corridors. To me, that's things that I think are sensible, and I think that, from a neighborly standpoint, like you say, it applies holistically enough off of certain distances off the road that I think would make a lot of sense to really discuss with Council, I think. And we'll figure out if they have a flavor for that or not. They may say, again, we don't really care, just let whatever happened, happen. Cause that's really what, at the end of the day, came down. It was, we gave them a pretty good, decent plan, and they basically said, eh, we don't really like it, just throw it all out, we'll do it a little bit here, and whatever. So, that's my take, cause maybe it's, I don't know if it's anybody else's take about, but that's just the way it kinda, it came across to me based off of what their final decision was at the end of the day.
You, you, you're about right on that. You're about right, you know. Cause, uh, cause zoning, when you talk about zoning, you just, you know, I've been here through this whole, all the way up from the beginning, and
You had to be escorted home a couple times.
Been time, and, uh, it just, it just, like you said, work, work on something, and most, cause we, uh, we just, just beating the ball, cause those guys are not gonna go for it, and I know all of them, the council, you know, do it. So, but like you said, the overlays and stuff like that, you can kinda maybe work on that.
Okay, so, like I said, y'all need to discuss the comp plan with Council, what you wanna see. Do we wanna change the ordinances to match the comp plan, or do we wanna change the comp plan? Cause if we wanna change the comp plan, we don't need to look at ordinances.
Right.
We need to change the comp plan and then look at ordinances. So, this is, this is almost like Planning Commission's strategic plan. What are the items that County Council and y'all want to focus on first? And then, basically make a list, look, we think changing the comp plan and the comp plan update, that's the next big thing, that's what we wanna focus on. Or if it's not, if it's the Martin Town Road corridor, that's what you wanna focus on, then discuss that with County Council and set that as your priority, and that'll be the next thing we work on. This is giving you a chance to see what their priorities are versus what your priorities are, and then set your game plan for the year.
Well, it might be a way too, though, you know, I know, I understand your feeling about, you've already beat this game.
What you're doing, that's fact, that's what happened.
I will say, this is not a, I just wanna have an opportunity to fuss at Planning, at, at County Council, that would not be productive.
No.
I mean, obviously, you can call your County Council representative anytime you want to, if all you wanna do is disagree with them. This gives you the ability to discuss with the entire Council at one time, what they, what, what direction they see us going in and saying, hey, look, I think we really need to talk about this Martin Town Road corridor. I think this is an important thing, what do you think? And this will, at the end, and Roger will be, just like at the strategic plan meeting, Roger's going to be, uh, regulating the meeting. So, at the end of it, there should be a list written, one, two, three, four, or whatever, of the items that y'all have discussed to prioritize moving forward through the year.
I think what I was trying to say earlier was, would this be a time, if we wanted to move towards zoning, to say to, you know, what are your feelings? You know, find out what
They're gonna say, I'm tired.
No, just say, just ask our, you know, you know, ask Dean, okay, Dean?
Absolutely appropriate, if you want to bring up zoning and, uh, see how they feel about it, the direction. I mean, obviously, as the Planning Commission, y'all can make a recommendation to change any zoning in the county anytime you want to. That is a power that the Planning Commission has. Uh, but this is to see what you wanna prioritize versus what they'd like to see prioritized, and bring it together into a list that y'all can agree on, that's, that's all this meeting is.
I'm about to call the question, so, is there any other comments? We're six-thirty, so
You have a motion, come here, come here.
No.
Motion, yeah.
I make a motion during the
I second.
Second in all the favor, John.
Done.
We already made the agenda.